My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everybody, on this, wow, on this rainy night. That was loud. They're on, mics are on. Hot mic, look out. On this rainy night, hope not to keep you out too long. Do we have anyone here for public participation concerning the budget? Is Darian Steve here?
I'm here.
Sir, come on up. You may have a seat here. State your name and address for the record.
Sure.
And you have three minutes. Thank you very much. This is about the budget?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
My name's Steven Robefco, 101 Secret Hollow Road in Monroe, Connecticut. My wife and I want to express our strong support for the proposed budget for the Monroe Board of Education. It is due to the wonderful teachers and administrators that have encouraged and taught our daughter Sei Yi, we adopted from China in the summer of 2019. When she came here, she did not know English. She is now a freshman at Massey, and we are so impressed with how far she has come over a short period of time. When she went to Stepanee, we first met Bruce Lazar, Dawn Palmly, and Mrs. Brown, who was the ESL teacher at the time. We can't say enough good things about Mrs. Brown and the support she provided to Sei Yi and how much she taught her, as much as Bruce did. At Jackie Hollow, we met Mr. Crowley before school started so she could have a comfort level when she went to school. He was absolutely wonderful to work with and deal with. After that, we met Julia Strong, who was also a pleasure to work with. Her reading teacher, Mrs. Michaels, instilled in her how to read and understand what she is reading. She has also taught her how to write. She has also participated in two summer programs that were very helpful for her. We want to make sure that the budget gets passed, also to ensure that the arts programs continue, due to the music and orchestra classes that she has learned. She currently plays violin as a result of those. Sei Yi's had talent in art when she came here, and she has become very close with Mr. Biazi, the middle school arts teacher. Sei Yi displayed her art at the Da Vinci Festival in 2023, and she also goes back and volunteers as an assistant teacher for the newspaper club and sometimes for other programs that Mr. Biazi hosts at Jackie Hollow. In conclusion, we strongly encourage anything that we could do to keep the budget as strong as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you, Steve. Anyone else for public participation? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to the presentations for our budget workshop. And first up is IT. Paul?
Good evening, everyone. All right, for the 2425 budget, my overall increase is $102,645, and I'll explain that in a minute. Some of the factors that are driving the increase, obviously increased student enrollment. As we get more students, the cost goes up for software programs and for services. Out of that increase, almost 75% of that, or $75,000, is additional requests for one-to-one Chromebooks, which we will be discussing a policy next week to look over, a review of that. And then also, too, the increasing cyber threats due to the world events. I get, used to get alerts usually once or twice a week, I get them daily now, about ongoing active threats in Connecticut, or targeting school districts or municipalities. Some of the noteworthy budget increases, software renewals, again, that's, that's an increase due to, again, that's directly tied to student population, as well as technical services. The copier increase, the number prior was kind of skewed, only because, and I, a large piece of this is because of COVID. We didn't have classes in person, so the copier and printer use plummeted. And that would happen to be the same year that we also slashed the toner budget and removed printers from classrooms and went to a more centralized copier solution. This increase kind of, this increase follows what's trending. So there, there has been an increase in, in the copier usage. However, it's still about $33,000 less than what we were funding with the toner, so, you know, a couple of years ago. So it's still a savings overall from previous years, but this is where, where that number's been trending. And then obviously, as I spoke, the, the increase in Chromebooks for one-to-one. One of the things that came across my desk recently was Google's commitment to extend support for Chromebooks. You know, normally, they usually get about five years' software support, pretty much guaranteed. And then that kind of grew to six years, where they would continue to update it. And now they're looking at a 10-year model, which is great, except there's, there's no Chromebook out there that's going to live in the wild in a school that's going to make it 10 years. No way. So, but as I stated before during the one-to-one presentation, if we can fund this and then keep it flat going forward, we can now start a planned replacement in the eighth grade and the third grade, so that we have a continual replacement cycle, so that our technology is always, is always relevant and, and compatible, especially with the testing. Some of the accomplishments this year, we did do a major upgrade to the Wi-Fi networks at all the schools, greatly increasing security. So that was a huge deal. We also were awarded a almost $50,000 PEGPAC TIA grant for networking upgrades. That's granted through PURA, the state of Connecticut Public Utilities. We finally have implemented multi-factor, two-factor authentication on our externally facing servers. So any of you that use webmail know that you now need a token to get into it. So that was, that was a huge thing for us. We've also implemented password policies. Passwords now expire every 90 days, and we continue to prioritize our cybersecurity structure, posture, rather, excuse me. And with that, are there any questions?
You know I have to ask.
Dennis. Dennis, we, we never hear from you.
The copy still centralized, the copier?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then you said on black and white only?
No. Some schools have black and white and color copiers.
Do they have to go out of their way to set it to color?
Yeah, the default, the default is black and white, and then they can choose color. They can also override the setting, because now they have to swipe.
Okay.
So they get the choice right then and there as well. But yeah, automatically, it's automatically sent to, to black and white.
Thanks.
And I want to thank Christine for meeting with me and going over the budget.
I have a question on the Chromebook. I think a few, a couple of meetings ago, you'd mentioned that's about $250 per student, and that includes the Chromebook. The charger, does it also include a protective case for the Chromebook?
No, it does not.
Okay.
No. But I factored that into my repair budget to purchase those, and we have other, we have other money that we can utilize for those to purchase, you know, one-to-one for, so if we get a Chromebook, we'll get a protective case to it, to a student as well, when we deploy them. And that's only going to be for six through 12.
Because they
Because they'll take them home, right?
Well, the, the software renewals, you said that was population-based, is it, are the renewals based on the number of students in the class? Help me with that, as far as, of course, is it open licensing that goes with the class?
It depends on the software title. So some software titles are, you know, per-seat licensing, so one user, one license. Some of them are district, they're based on district population. So you have, you know, 3,500 students, okay, this is, this is the cost. So it does, it runs the gamut. I will say that one of the things that we, we do every year is we do audit that list to make sure, and we audit the usage, too, to make sure, hey, is this being utilized? Because if we find that we only have one or two teachers, let's say, or classes using a software title that we're buying for the district, then we need to find something else.
And the numbers you had presented before in regards to replacement cost and all that, that's the same numbers that's in your budget right now, right? I know policy's coming up, and that would be in there, but that's, those are the numbers that are in that policy, right?
Yes, I guess.
Anything else for Paul? No, Paul, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, facilities. How are you?
All right, good evening, everybody. All right, so the big number this year is a 0% increase, so.
Showing off?
No, actually, so just knowing we have a challenging budget this year, and, you know, the benefit we're now seeing from these past three years of investing quite a bit into the facility budget and making lots of repairs rather than Band-Aid fixes, now we have the benefit to be able to stay static and do a 0% on a tough year, so. That's where we are. Not much to, to really talk about there. Any questions?
No trailer costs or mobile facilities in this, not in this?
No, not, not in this, yeah. All right, we'll move on to capital, which you can barely see, right? Me, too.
See it, but we can feel it.
I'll just run down the, this year's asks. So at Massey, we're looking for $85,000 to replace the carpet right here in the library. It's original to the renovation, 22 years old. Jackie Hollow, we're looking to replace the power board control system for the auditorium. It does the stage lighting, the house lighting, and that's original, giving us some trouble, definitely needs to be done this year if possible. That's at $150,000. We had Jackie Hollow also with a roof replacement at $1.5 million. It's original as well, from '98, so it's just due to be replaced. Driveway and parking lot there as well. Done plenty of patches over the last few years, but it's due to be repaved completely. And also, the office and library carpet, that Jackie Hollow, original, again, 26 years old, so we're looking for $125,000 to take care of that. Monroe Elementary, pave parking lot and install some parking lot lighting. It really needs an upgrade for the lighting there. The parking lot's definitely as well due to be paved. But with the facility study in mind, we'll see how that goes. We'll wait for that, and that might get pushed, and we'll see where it ends up. And then lastly, we have the new state-mandated HVAC assessment that needs to be done throughout all the buildings. It's, it's actually a very invasive study that needs to be done, an assessment for the state. So that is due January 2025, and we have $250,000 for that.
Is that something, obviously, we're going to have to RFP for and pick companies and all that?
Definitely.
Completely, completely separate than the facilities study?
Exactly.
Very specific?
It's very specific to the HVAC. And, you know, some of the guidelines from the state, it has to be performed by an environmental hygienist or a mechanical engineer, which neither one comes cheap.
Needless to say, completely unfunded mandate.
Correct, correct. So, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of questions in the state around this thing, just the sheer volume of it. There's not enough companies to do all this.
Exactly.
That's the price. Every, every district in the, in the state has to have this July 25 or January 25.
I think this assessment is, I think the assessment's definitely going to create some issues for all the towns, and like you said, Joe, there's only so many of these people that can do this assessment. I think the state's going to end up having to push it out a little bit and redo their guidelines for when it's due.
Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, I thank both Dan and Ron for all their work on the capital, the capital plan, and we have the, the town capital plan meeting tomorrow night at Town Hall. We've done a pretty good job of trying to space this stuff out, move it across the five-year, you know, continuum here. The two items that are new this year that were on there were the auditor, that one kind of popped, you know, things happen, and we've got to put them on, and, you know, obviously, the mandate with the HVAC was one, and then the auditorium lights were those two.
Or the other.
Jackie Hollow, everything else has
Everything else has progressed through the five-year plans. Yeah, right, exactly.
And that cost, is that just a guesstimate? Because we don't really know.
For which one?
For the HVAC.
It is, it is. So until we figure out exactly who can do it, who's going to, you know, and send it out for an RFP, it's some feedback I've gotten from some of our contractors on a, on a ballpark estimate on what it could cost. Yep.
But that still could change with the state.
Right.
It can, yeah.
It'll be like transfer.
Any other questions?
With the Monroe Elementary paving of the parking lot, just try to be mindful of the property line. I don't want to lose any more property.
Yeah.
Last time it was paved, some of my property got
I was made aware of that, yes. I see the pin in the driveway.
Put some flags up.
Yeah.
Some unknown person put it there. Put a basketball hoop up.
Any other questions for Dan?
I'd also like to thank Greg for meeting with me and reviewing this budget. Thank you.
No, absolutely. I guess the only thing that really stands out there is, and we talked about it, was, you know, when is the right time to repave and install lighting? And that's kind of a, goes together, but really have to wait to see what the facility side turns out. But I do feel as though, you know, safety is important for events that might be getting out in the evening.
Right.
And if there's any kind of exterior lighting that can be installed.
Yeah, yeah, and I mentioned that through Eversource, I might be able to do some floodlights on the telephone poles that are out in the front on 111, and try to utilize that as a temporary fix until we can get that done.
Dan, the, the roof at Jackie Hollow, I know you said it was original, is it a flat roof?
I'm sorry?
Is it a flat roof?
It is.
Have there been any issues with it?
Yeah, many, yes. Yeah. We've spent quite a bit of money on making repairs on that, so it's definitely due to be replaced.
That was the roof, that, almost part of it fell on someone?
That was the gym roof.
That was on the inside, that was the interior.
Yeah, that was a gym interior, different, different, yeah, different issue.
Dan, with doing the roof and the HVAC assessment, would air conditioning units go on that roof? We kind of think in that, too? Or would the air conditioning units go on those pads that we had talked about on the outside of the building? Or, like, how do we coordinate that? I don't want to, you know what I mean?
To, well, once the HVAC assessment's done, and I would imagine the facility study, when we get ready to change the air handlers up on the roof, then those would be upgraded to, you know, support air conditioning as well. And then hopefully, we can remove some of those window units as we go. That would be the time to do it.
That would be all done before your roof replacement?
I'm sorry?
That would be done all before your roof replacement?
Um, it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know. They would flash in your curbs that mount your, your rooftop units, and then the rooftop unit would just come off of what they call the curb, which is the mount, and then just a new unit would go on to fit that existing curb. So as long as the roof is flashed to that curb, you can do the HVAC after that. Doesn't have to be done prior, too.
And the other thing, I thought we had mentioned, I don't know, there was the blacking out of the third floor, Jackie Hollow, that hallway.
I'm sorry?
Just that baking light, you know, baking sun, that hallway, you know, down towards the library, it's just nonstop sun.
Right.
Are we going to film those or anything for those windows? There's kind of
We could look into that and see if it will help, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the heat up there is just absurd.
Yeah, no, for sure, yeah. Yep.
Dan, one last question.
Sure.
I know the turf is a couple of years out, but has there ever been any testing or assessment done as to its condition, its current condition?
So every year, the turf field gets a look from, you know, the turf professionals, so to speak. We contract with the company that actually installed it, and they work with another company that they recommend. But they come in every year, they do something called the G-force test, so they check the thickness of the back fill is actually coconut, and they make sure that for concussion, that it meets the, you know, absorption ratings that it was designed to have. So that's done every year, and while they're out, they'll groom it, they'll look for any stitching in the steams, you know, we have those little kind of things taken care of if there is anything. We haven't really had any major, any major problems with the turf as of yet.
Well, you said that the G-force testing, where, do you have the reports on those?
Yeah, I do.
And when do they do those?
Uh, they, wow, when was that just, I was just on, I want to say September?
And Dan, you think we're still on target for that two years, two more years? For that total replacement, does it have to be moved up, moved back?
I think it, you know, like I said, they haven't found anything really wrong with it, you know, you find a stitch here, a stitch there. Quite honestly, if anything, it looks like it could be pushed back. So, you know, the 10-year lifespan was, it's an estimation, depending on usage and that kind of thing, and, you know, I'm sure every school system's different, depending on how many fields they have and that kind of thing. So maybe it's eight years for some schools and 12 for another.
Right, right.
I, I think we're going to have a good possibility of pushing it back.
And when they do the G-force testing, there's probably, there's a score, right? And does that degrade over time? So do you have a
No, so the back, the coconut back fill gets replaced if needed.
Okay.
So, you know, yeah, to make sure it meets that standard.
When was the last time we added or replaced any coconut fill?
Two years ago. So not this past year or the year before. And we actually still have inventory from that, so it's down in the garage at the field. We have enough to do another fill if, if needed. We just have to pay the labor.
Do we have the capability to do that in-house?
No. Takes a special machine they use to make sure that it's distributed throughout the fibers of the carpet evenly, so we like to leave that up to them. If you have a small spot, you know, say from soccer, and you're just kicking in the same spot, and you want to backfill a small, one, one-foot area, that's easy enough. But to get the whole field consistent and make sure that that same test result is consistent throughout the field, that's left up to them.
I think the lacrosse goal area is usually a spot where we'll probably touch up because
Touch up spots, yeah.
That's where a lot of the play is.
Yeah, exactly. What's that?
Living goal, these sets.
Yeah. Yep.
Do you think we could get access to the testing results?
Sure, yeah, definitely.
As long as you're trending it, I think we're in good shape. It'd be great if we get extra years of that field.
Yeah.
And also, I know we meant, I brought it up, was there was supposed to be some money allocated each year towards the repurchase of the turf.
Yeah.
Do you know how much has been actually allocated for that, if any?
They stopped that, Greg, yeah. It was funded for about the first two years, and then because of budget issues, they stopped funding it. And we spoke with Board of Finance, and the agreement was we would just put it in the capital for when it's needed and monitor it, but, yeah. Those monies were used for other facilities things, right, Dan?
It was.
The refrigerator and stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah. Some of those same upgrades, so that we're at a zero budget now, but yeah, that's, that money was used, yeah.
Right.
And we had also looked at using end-of-year funds, but I think that was the feedback from, from finance, was yeah, put it in the capital.
It was put back into facilities replacements.
Okay, just want to make sure there's no money in the bill.
Yeah, you, you remember correctly, but yeah, it was, I think it was stopped after the first two years, Christine?
I want to say two, yeah, the first two. That was it.
Yeah.
And we're all set with the press box, right? That's not
That's getting done.
That's getting done, and that was already money we allocated.
That's allocated, yeah.
That'll be done in the spring.
Any updates on that?
Yeah.
Eversource?
Yeah.
That's what you were waiting for?
Spring's a maybe. We're actually looking at pricing out the press box to be built in place and comparing it to the cost of buying a prefab. And, and the problem with a prefab, you know, you can pick and choose your materials, doing it yourself. And, and the prefab, getting it logistically down to the spot where it needs to be mounted, we'll be going over our leaching fields. So I'm a little, I'd like to see what it would cost to do ourselves, design it and, and have it built rather than buy a prefab. So we'll see where that ends up, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, anything else for Dan?
Well, just to jump ahead to 2526, I thought we took care of the heating of the pool this year.
The filter, right? We did the filter.
Filter and chlorinator were replaced, not the heating system.
Thanks.
Yep.
Is that it? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, everybody.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, before we close, I just want to remind you that the latest on the questions is out.
Yes, thank you.
And to keep filling up that document with any questions, our next meeting is the 16th at 7:00, right? That's Tuesday?
Oh, we don't have anything this day?
No. No, we put a placeholder in for the following Thursday for budget, in case we need to. But our next regular meeting is the 16th at 7:00, and we will discuss the budget, so take a look at everything, and we'll have a discussion on it and possibly some motions to pass or move things around, whatever, whatever we would like to do. So keep those questions coming, and they'll get us those answers. Anybody have anything else?
No, I would just say, I mean, I know we're, we're going to continue talking about this, it's a so long process, as Ron always reminds me, it's a, it's a marathon, it's not a sprint, as, as information comes in. We are very early in our process. I know of only now that we moved it back, you know, to the second meeting in December, we're like the second in the area to come out with a budget behind, I think, Brookfield. But, you know, we have a long ways to go. It's got to go to the, the First Selectmen, and then ultimately to Board of Finance, and we will continue to work with them. Ron and I met with our insurance brokers the other day. I don't have any hard numbers now, but, you know, as those numbers come in and true up a little bit, if it's out of our hands at that point, we'll be working with the First Selectmen or if it's
Any movement on that 15%?
I, I, I'm confident, confident, but I
14 and a half.
But I don't want to say anything yet because
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a huge number.
That's a huge number.
A huge number, yeah.
And considering we're so labor-intensive, it makes it, compounds it.
It's the, we know what our, what our budget consists of.
Joe, what are you hearing from other superintendents?
In terms of
Like budget?
The only one I know that came out was, Brookfield was out at 6 and 1/2. That's the only one that's, that's come out. What I'm hearing is the same thing, everybody's fighting the same battles. I, you know, I talked about, I know another district that came out, you know, with, it was in the paper, Westport came out with, you know, a possible $8 million increase in, in medical insurance alone. So I know that, you know, those are, the same things that are impacting us are impacting other districts in terms of, you know, the loss of ARPS, or that's affecting everybody around, around the country and insurance. Those two, those are the two big, two big ones right now.
Like we said last meeting, we have 0.95% of this budget to, to talk about, pretty much, to control, yeah. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Chandler, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Jeff? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Good night, everybody.